6:01 on Monday, August 17th, 2015, we will call the school committee meeting to order. We have, uh, this is not our regular meeting, this is actually an off-cycle meeting for us. At least, at this point in time, we'll switch to our, um, uh, bi-weekly meetings in October, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we'll start with approval of our minutes from August 3rd, 2015. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes of August 3rd, 2015.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, are there any corrections, comments, questions?
Aye.
That's good. Okay. All in favor to approve the minutes from August 3rd, 2015?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as always, we also have our visitors' comment segment. Uh, I don't think there, there are any visitors today with us, so we will, uh, uh, hopefully have more visitors at our next meeting in September. Uh, the next item is continuation of an old business, which is related to our superintendent search, and for that, uh, we have blank quitter from Massachusetts Association of School Committees with us. Did you want to join us here?
Uh, can I move up here?
Absolutely, yeah. Sorry, we did not. Did you, did you want a chair like this? Is that good enough?
No, this is okay. Uh, based on information that I received, um, from the superintendent through you, I developed, uh, a list of survey questions and a list of live focus group questions, which we have put up, uh, basically public res- uh, open responses, and this is just a draft. But this survey is available to you if you wanted to take it. The link to the survey is right here, uh, so that if people, if you, if you wanted to go with the survey as drafted based on what we received, um, it could be up as early as tomorrow.
Okay.
Otherwise, we can make any changes you want.
Okay.
We can change the survey, uh, and once it, once it's opened and people stop responding, uh, it becomes a little more problematic to, uh, to change the survey itself, but if you have any time that you want, we can make that change. I also, uh, put together just this, this is a compendium of some of the surveys that you may or may not have seen up to now. The, the superintendent gave me these questions, which seem to be the consensus of, of what the board was looking to ask its remote, uh, survey takers. Uh, and it's, and even though it doesn't say drafted, it's a draft.
Okay.
So, uh, the hard copy is, is actually your survey only. This booklet has some additional surveys, including some multiple choice, uh, questions. I will tell you that although open response surveys are harder to, uh, to aggregate, uh, they're more discerning than multiple choice questions.
Give a lot more information.
Yeah, multiple choice responses, I can tell you what your answers are going to be, with, with some very small changes, but with open responses, um, we can identify trends more easily. Uh, they tend to allow people who can't get to the focus groups an opportunity to purchase a pay. You get a lot more responses. We will provide for you, uh, all of the open responses that come in, with the, uh, exception of those open responses which are inappropriate, which we will, um, excise. In other words, if somebody decides to, uh, use the survey as an excuse to mount a, uh, inappropriate attack on someone with, with an expectation of privacy, we're just not going to leave that in there occasionally, you know, what you get when anybody has free rein in the public arena. So, uh, I guess I would, I'd leave this, uh, I'd leave this with, with you and the ultimate changes that you wish to make. Otherwise, um, we would be ready and eager to proceed with developing, uh, a brochure with the information that, uh, we can adapt. I think one of the things that we may have discussed was, um, adapting the, uh, brochure that you used before with maybe some new artwork or some new photos and updated information. Jennifer Handy from our office is ready to get that information from you so that we can give a template out to you immediately. Then, uh, you can make the decision of whether you would like your brochure to be exclusively online, or whether you'd like us to distribute it, uh, and mail it to, uh, to our recruiting app. So that would be for you to decide. There are districts that only go with the online version and incur no additional cost at all. Uh, we do have a recruiting list of about twelve to thirteen hundred names of people who are the deal for superintenances in Massachusetts, and, you know, for the cost of postage, we can send those things out. So, uh, that's a step that needs to take place. The other step that needs to take place before we begin the actual formal recruiting and gathering of applications is, uh, the, uh, some dates to start working with the search committee and to start meeting with the stakeholders here and set those meetings up.
Right.
As I said to you, uh, we can certainly come out for a couple of days and talk to as many people as you might, give people any school of an opportunity to talk to us, speak to whoever you think is appropriate, uh, give them an opportunity to brainstorm with us live. That is the most valuable experience if you can get people to come. The central office, the faculty, parents, and students will give you four different versions of what they think, and that can be very helpful. So, uh, I don't want to be so oldish to suggest you, uh, determine those times now. Has, has a search committee been appointed?
We don't have a final committee yet. We have our own members appointed to the committee, but we don't have the final committee.
Okay.
We've got to do that once school starts.
Uh, okay.
I think that was our plan, right?
Did we, did we set a date for the, um, for the orientation of the search committee?
I don't think we set any dates.
No, we didn't.
No, we haven't set any.
We have tentative dates, but this is what we can hopefully put in some concrete right now.
Okay, well, that would be, that would be very helpful. Now, uh, the dates that we probably want to lock up sooner rather than later would be, uh, the, uh, dates when we'd start, excuse me. God, a booklet will not surrender itself to one. I'm not contagious.
I was just thinking that, please don't.
No, 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 no. No, but it's, it's, uh, still in there.
Yeah.
It's not surrendering itself to all the salt and water. Uh, so I may uphold these laws and just say, uh, a date to orient the search committee, a date to, uh, begin distributing materials about your search.
What is it again?
Well, we, we, one of the dates when the, when the search will formally start.
Okay.
Which means when we start distributing materials and, uh, send materials out.
Okay.
So prior to that, we'd have to have everything in. Then we will, uh, while that material is out, start meeting with live people and get the results of the focus groups online as they come in. Now, I have the ability to, uh, download all results that are in at any given moment. So for people who want to see what's happening and trending, we can certainly give you that. But what we'd like to be able to do is have the search committee see some of the initial results, particularly if you ask the question, what questions would you like to post to the candidates? Because they'll help us with, with that, and we've got plenty of good questions to, to, to develop, and we have a whole new, uh, set of, uh, questions that we think are appropriate to 2016. And you'll have access to all of those, uh, as will the search committee, but they'll be helpful to have them advised by the people who are recommending other questions and priorities. We need a closing date, and then after the closing date, we can start working with the search committee on when they can start doing interviews. So the key, the key dates are when to start the search and when to orient the search committee, because the search committee will then start making some of the rest of the decisions.
So, using your expertise, when, when would, if you could throw, I think you need to throw some dates our way as ideas from your experience, we can, we can then either agree with them or fill in the blanks and work from there, because we have to, you know the whole timeframe, so, um, I mean, I look at 2010, they, they had the date of September 30th for the submitting applications, that was a deadline, in 2010.
It was an early deadline. I don't know what the rationale for that was, but...
It depends on when they were looking to fire that. I would go.
I know the vote to point the superintendent did not, did not, did not happen on November 17th of 2010, so they were obviously behind, but, uh, it's just a schedule anyway, but...
Uh, well, I wouldn't start before Labor Day.
I don't think we're ready to start before Labor Day.
Okay. Uh, but people are paying attention once they're back to school, so if you're in a position to start, for example, on or about the, uh, on or about, uh, the week of the 13th or the week of the 20th?
Of September.
Of September?
And that, and that would be getting, getting the board out, the applications are available, whatever you're doing, your advertising.
Correct.
So when would we need, when do we then have to have this focus, the search committee needs to go? Not before September 20th, then?
Uh, the search committee could probably be organized shortly after the C, the search process begins. Now, if you put your survey up immediately, you'll be, you'll be gathering data for the search committee, so theoretically, the search committee could meet earlier than when the search goes out, but if you wanted to give people time to get acclimated to the start of school, uh, I would suggest you do it in, uh, in, uh, mid-September.
Right, 'cause, I mean, I defer to you, you two ladies are going to be on the committee, right?
Right.
And we've got to meet with the staff, and I think, I think it'd be helpful to have one of you or somebody meet with the staff near the beginning of school, tell them what we're looking for. If, if we decide that we want a staff member from each building, we've got to, you know, start to get these things in motion, because it's not easy to get a big committee together.
Yeah, if you could come up with a list of constituents that you wanted to serve on your search committee, then we could put out an all-call to saying, send a letter of interest, like we did for the task force.
That's kind of what I was saying.
Send a letter of interest, that you would then take a look at those at your September 14th meeting and begin to appoint.
That sounds like a good idea to me. Can we just do something like that?
Yeah, I would say that would be, because then you would ask people to send letters of interest in.
Oh.
So that, so that we'll have them by September 14th and we can make decisions.
And when will you be meeting after that?
Yes.
Regular school committee or the, well, or the...
Will you, will you be in a position to appoint a search committee?
September 14th.
Well, September 14th, we have a school committee meeting, so we could do that.
So you could review and appoint the search committee on September 14th?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what we do before then, but that's, that'd be, I think that'd be our goal.
Okay. Uh, if you could appoint the search committee on the 14th and inform search committee members that they would need to be able to attend an orientation meeting on a specific date...
Well, I would throw that date out now, too.
Okay.
It's around your schedule, right?
Well, at this point, we're wide open, so I would suggest, uh, if you appoint them on the 14th, uh, and, uh, you invite them to a search committee on, uh, Monday, September 21st. I mean, it's Monday.
Are there, I don't know what, she's got all the evening parent conferences, our parent open houses, parent nights.
Hmm, let's see.
Accreditation team, Connie, those kind of things.
The accreditation, NIESC accreditation team will be here the week of the 20th. They're coming in that Sunday.
Are they going to be hosting focus groups, too?
Hmm?
Are they going to be hosting focus groups, too?
I...
I don't think so.
NIESC?
Don't think so. I think it's just the evidence review and...
Just going to warn you, they get nervous when they see me.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think they know the situation. Uh, East Meadows Parent's Night is the 10th, uh, West Streets is the 16th, and Granby Junior Senior High School is the 17th, so those are all the week before the 20th, but the NIESC team will be here the week of the 20th.
Is the 22nd a good night?
Um, again, NIESC will still be here.
So are you saying that if we do it the same week, it would be two tasking on some , okay, so you're saying scratch that week?
Yeah, I would say if you were going to look at the week of, um, like, the week of the 28th, you know, that Monday, the 28th, or something like that.
Um, school's got a good start, people, you know, got their parents' nights, open houses done.
I can do the 28th.
You too.
I can do the 22nd.
Mm-hmm. So the week of the 28th is, is, is wide open at the moment. Is there a night that's...
And that's the whole search committee you'd be meeting with.
The entire search committee, right. And that will be a public meeting that, uh, anyone could observe if they wanted to.
The Monday would work for me and also for me and the 28th.
Yeah, and I don't need to be posted for any other meeting.
Does that work?
I'd go with it, yep.
What time?
Two weeks after the search committee's been officially appointed.
Yeah.
What time?
Well, 6:00 is tough for me.
6:30?
How long a meeting do you think that would be, Glenn?
Started at 6:30, you could be done by 8:30, and you could get a lot of work done by 8:30.
So you'd do that, or 7 to 9, whatever.
If, if the school committee is really careful in its appointment of the search committee.
Right.
To get the best and most constructive discussions you can find.
Well, that's a tall order.
I'm just going to, going to tell you, um, if you've got, if you've got potential search committee members who love attention and can't lose an argument and love attention and are difficult collaborators...
We don't want them.
No, you don't. So I would ask you to, you know, use your best judgment and...
I'm not involved, but you two are.
Yeah.
7 o'clock, 7 to 9 might be better for some parents or, you know.
7 to 9?
I'm just saying, I don't know.
It doesn't matter to me, 7 to 9 is fine with me, it gives you time to...
Okay, now, when you say 6:30, is that because...
Work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because sometimes, if you do the meeting early, you can be done before dinner, so if they were, if you wanted to meet at 5 to 6:30, you could do it, but okay.
I can't do it, there's no way.
That's fine, whatever works for you.
So 7 tonight?
7 o'clock.
And when we put out a call for letters, you want me to say how many parents are soliciting, how many community members, how many teachers?
Yep.
Like you did for the task force.
Yeah, give me some guidance.
Well, we can do that after, too. I mean, we talked about that somewhat before, we talked about how, how big a committee do you want. How big is your strategic planning committee?
It's 25.
Yeah, how's that work?
No.
That's way too big.
Yeah.
So what, again, I can't remember what you told us before, what's a, a good size probably for our committee?
Nine or 11?
Yes, nine, nine.
Nine would be, mine would be very helpful.
So if we had one...
One administrator, right? One administrator, three teachers?
Teachers, that's four, five, six are already...
Do you do four teachers? We always talk about that, four, does the high school need a middle school and a high school teacher, or is one enough?
What's a typical composition?
A typical composition does not have the non-educators outnumbered by the faculty members. I'm just telling you, you do not want the faculty to be in the majority of your search committee. They will attempt to bully the non-faculty members.
Yeah.
And I say that because it happens everywhere. So if you were having a committee of nine, maybe two faculty members?
One elementary, one secondary.
Administrator and anonymous, maybe?
Yeah, is that possible?
We'll deal with whatever we want.
One elementary and one secondary?
That's what you want, that's what we'll say.
Now, when I think of elementary, I'm thinking pre-K through eight.
Pre-K through six.
I think three teachers are the best. I think if you just focus on one from each school, that just doesn't exclude anybody. One from each school.
I'm all right with that, too.
And there, you might want a parent from each level as well.
So if we do one, one...
So if you had a teacher from each school, a teacher from each level, a parent from each level, that's six. And then a school committee members or two?
Two.
Two.
All right.
One administrator.
One administrator.
That's eight administrators.
That's nine.
We need a couple of community members.
So that would be 11, but that's okay.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have somebody from, oops, sorry, um, from a committee, whether it's Board, Finance Committee, something, committee number, would be nice.
So you want...
Then open it up to the community at large and then select from the community at large?
So two seats from the community?
So it sounds like we're going with 11.
Okay.
Two school community members, one administrator, uh, one teacher from each building, and one parent from each building, plus two community members, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say no more than 11, no more than...
Yeah, so that's 11.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's a group that you'll meet with on the 28th?
Yes.
A room like this is fine?
This is fine, yep. And it would be a public meeting, uh, and at that time, we would orient them, and we would try to get them started on the development of questions for the candidates. In other words, um, if you have 11 people, we might, uh, do a little exercise and ask people to identify those question areas where they'd like to pose questions, and you might come up with 20, 25 question areas and ask members of the search committee to start developing those questions, maybe using resources that we have or your best professional and personal judgment.
So the sooner we could get this going, the better, because then you'd have data to bring for the orientation.
Well, if you, if you have it going as on the date that you've scheduled, you could conceivably have this, I mean, this conserve, this survey can be up tomorrow, but if you want to make some fine tuning and, and just send me a final version of what you want, it can be up as soon as you're ready. So theoretically, you could have this up four weeks before the search committee meets and even two weeks before the search committee is appointed, and let people participate in the survey, uh, and then we'll, we will have done some live stuff before that as well.
I think that's a good idea, to get the survey up as soon as possible and maybe send out something and give people, you know, the time.
And we can do that through Connected and put a link right on the front page of the website.
The link which I have provided is the link that your survey will have.
Mm-hmm.
That link is, the link is ready now, but when people stop responding to the survey, you can't really modify the survey.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I'd need you to, to, you don't have to do it right this minute, but at some point in the next 24, 48 hours, indicate the survey's okay, or please change the following. I can change the survey, it's very easy.
This is the one we're talking about.
Well, yeah, but the survey that we would put online...
It looks like one.
It would look like this. I'm just going to tell you, I took the questions that the superintendent sent me, but I added question number six, which is what questions would you like to see asked of the candidates?
That's good. So this is the survey right here?
Yes. Well, the search committee will usually come up with enough questions so that you can get two interviews out of those questions. In other words, the school committee often appreciates the leftovers or variations on...
I thought when we spoke, we concluded that, uh, open-ended questions would be better for the focus group.
We're going to do open-ended questions for the focus groups as well. These are the focus group questions that we would ask, basically similar questions.
Right, so, but you're not going to put those on the survey online?
No, no.
Okay.
No, step back.
I misunderstood, okay.
These questions would be asked of the people who attend.
Okay.
And they'd all be referred to the survey if they want to provide us with additional comments that they prefer to make privately. Now, we don't ask the people to identify themselves anymore, and, uh, I have no way of knowing who's responding. The only thing we can tell when we aggregate the data is whether the same computer is used more than once. And usually, the only time you see that is when people use the, the computer at the school library, and a number of them will come and take the survey, so it's really not abused, and there are very, very, very few, uh, inappropriate responses.
Well, I, these surveys are fine, that's what we talked about last time. And Judy, thanks for working and sending them together, it's, we don't have to beat that anymore, that seems what we said.
Okay, the survey's okay, you have the link?
Yep.
You can...
We can make it go live tomorrow.
Take the survey as soon as you get home.
Yep. I'll make it go live tomorrow.
Yeah.
So put on the table right away that we're not, we're not looking to combine this position, just so we put that issue, we're, we're looking for a superintendent, no special ed combination, so we, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing that, we talked about it, but I think we have to make sure we're clear.
Did I miss something? Did I miss a decision?
No, but we had talked about it, but we didn't really firm it up, I suppose, but now's the time just to make sure that something doesn't tell later, well, how did you combine it with something else? Way to go, it's just...
Well, I guess, let's just first, have, yeah, that's, we're going to ask Glenn, I think, what his feedback would be on that. Then, if we agree on that one, yes, this would be a good time to just make sure that we clarify, but I don't think we reached that decision yet. So Glenn, what do you think?
The latest trending has been for people to seek a discreet superintendency. We've had some superintendent business managers, some superintendent SPED directors from time to time, some of them function as that. Most cases have found special education too great a responsibility and, and too big a draw from the superintendency. There are people who's on the business manager side and they're not happy either with the, uh, the...
Possibly, possibly have been in flux for too many years here in special ed.
Now, there are a lot of superintendents who double as the personnel director, um, because personnel is a big part of what the superintendent's job is, huh?
I kind of thought that was one of the, I thought the job responsibilities was anyway.
Well, large, large districts would have somebody handling personnel. Uh, so...
That was kind of our, our, our biggest concern when we talked about it, was to get somebody who was highly qualified and skilled to handle both, I'm not so sure they'd be in Granby. I mean, we, we were kind of saying, you know, they might be in a larger, you know, a Boston or a, a larger...
Yeah, but then it would be under a larger district.
No, I know, I'm, I'm saying that, that the caliber of the candidate, I think would, I don't know, maybe that's my assumption, but might gravitate more to, um, more visibility, more visible area.
Well, there are a lot of special educators who apply for the superintendency on the basis of the fact that SPED involves pretty much everything, so people who can do SPED tend to be more likely to be relatively talented. If you get a SPED director who applies, pose the question, "How would you feel about assuming some responsibilities for special education, or how would you manage the special education function?" It's a good question. There's a whole, a whole separate discussion that will take place over what you look for in the questions and what you look for in the answers. in the questions, and what you look for in the answers.
So what is everybody's general overall feeling?
Just looking for a superintendent schools.
I agree.
I agree, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then again, you know, the question that you asked just now, if the opportunity arises and somebody wants to ask that question, we don't have to hold back, we can, we can ask that question, but I think we all agree that our first approach is to keep those two positions separate and-
Do you want to set up some dates to hold for focus groups?
No.
I think so.
I think so, too, because-
It's not.
You know, if we didn't do it now.
Yeah. Let's be done with that, too.
Clearly, you don't want to do this the first week of school.
I'm not so sure anybody would-
Interested.
Yeah.
Would you want to-
Would you want to do it after you meet with the search committee? Would that be too late to do it after that?
You'd be running up against, what are we talking about as a closing date for your, for your search? Let's look at that.
When's it going to kick off? When is the application going to be available? And who does the application?
Well, first of all, we have a standard application that we can use, and we can run by you to take a look at.
And that's typically what you do, then?
Yeah.
Nothing we have to make up?
No, 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 we will create the application.
So when would you, if, that was proven creative, when would that, when would you envision that, the announcement of the vacancy?
Four to five weeks of the announcement of the vacancy, and keeping the search open. So for example, if the notice went out the week of the thirteenth?
Week of September thirteenth? No.
Can we get all your stuff ready to go by, you know, getting it, whatever you decide to do? I mean, if you want to post online the vacancy. Or if you'd like to print the brochure, and have us-
Says here?
Yes. Or if you would like us to send a letter announcing the vacancy, and directing people to the website, we can certainly do that.
Well, what do you think would be best?
You know, more recently, I've been recommending that people put their position online, put their material online, and, you know, we do an email blast, but-
I thought we kind of, we kind of came to that conclusion as well.
I think we had talked about that.
Online is, seems to be the most-
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't discourage you from sending a letter, telling people that the vacancy is opened, and they should go to the website, so that something comes into their hands. But a piece of mail is a lot less expensive than an advertisement, or the additional charge of printing and mailing the brochure. The brochure can be downloaded and printed.
And who are we sending the letter to?
Letter will go to superintencies in New England and the northeast.
I see.
List of our people who asked us to be on the distribution list, and of course, the website.
So it's a handful of letters?
Thirteen hundred.
Oh.
A lot of hands.
You're within driving distance of, of probably six or seven hundred school districts. Six or seven hundred candidates could drive here and get home within three hours. You know, three hours and three hours. Thinking about, actually, almost two, you're almost anywhere in Connecticut, two, two and a half hours. New Hampshire, anywhere else in Massachusetts, you're certainly a little, maybe it'd be a little hotter, western New York. And of course, the website, and the superintendent's association website, we'll post this as well.
It's a very large population, and the return is not going to be, obviously, anything comparable, but-
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, is it worth it?
Yeah, is it just doing the advertising that, on the website, or what you do, point out? Wouldn't that be enough?
And going out to the associations, right?
The state school boards associations, yes.
Yeah.
I would suggest a letter, just so that people get something in their hand, but-
But the letter goes to who, again?
The letter goes to the recruiting list, which is thirteen hundred people.
So I would, and, you know, we should, we should talk about the letter as well, but I would assume that if I am out there looking for a position, I would go to where I would see these postings, and that would be your website, that would be MASSS website. And I believe, one of the earlier conversations that we had, you mentioned that a great majority of these jobs are, not only posted, but looked for on the websites. Your website or MASSS website.
Correct, and there are people who call us constantly, and people we speak with regularly. We would be reaching out to candidates.
I guess I'm not, I'm not completely convinced it's necessary, and that you're giving letters, but I could be convinced otherwise. I guess I'm just not, you know, I'm not feeling it. Thirteen hundred letters is a lot of, I don't know. I'm wondering what kind of response you're getting.
Well, for six hundred bucks, it's a lot less than buying an advertisement, and it saves you the cost of printing, because you just direct people to you.
I guess, more so, that is true. More so than that, I'm wondering whether sending a letter shows intent. In other words, you know, we are basically a school system that is very carefully, but very adamantly pursuing a new superintendent for our school system. I don't know whether there's a message behind sending something.
If you want a letter, if you do decide to do a letter, and you want to promote the vacancy, you would also need to make a decision about whether you guys want to draft the letter, or whether you want us to draft the letter. Sometimes the district wants to manage that, and sometimes they just say, just let everybody know what's out there, and we're not going to get involved in that exercise.
I'm in that camp.
Because that's what you do, and I'm sure it's not well.
Yeah. And it's just, it's, you know, I mean, I would love to be in control of everything, but-
From your brochure, we would get a sense of what the highlights of this would be.
When would we send this letter, if we have-
This letter would go out at the beginning of the search recruitment process, so the letter would go out the beginning of-
September?
Yeah, and we're looking at kicking things off on-
Week of September thirteenth.
Thirteenth. Okay.
Now, you're going to need a brochure, obviously, before then, so-
I need something ready to go up.
That means you need to make a decision tonight, when you have another meeting.
September thirteenth.
Because the next meeting you have is September fourteenth at this point.
Or you could, you know, you can delegate this editorial content, or something that's going on in the mail, so you could, you could run it by everybody.
Did you do this last time?
We did it.
You printed it out?
We did it, and we had it printed.
Jim, could you pass that down, when you get a chance, please?
I actually brought a couple of them with me.
We're going to have to make some adjustments on that.
Yeah.
And we got to do the whole, we got to do the timeframe for everything, we've got to talk about salary at some point.
I brought a couple more with me, if you-
Sure, thank you.
Well, we probably need to confirm that.
So if we're going to keep the same format, given that there is quite a bit of information here, for instance, compensation, that would require a conversation?
Yep.
A good conversation. The timeline, we're not sure about the timeline at this point. We know when we're going, we want to start, but I know that we have the details as listed here.
But we can, just using Glenn, though, we can, we can suggest of what they should be, you know?
We can.
Yep.
But we definitely have a different, a different timeline.
Right, yeah, but we got to put that in there, I think that's helpful, right?
Yes. Now, you're not, you're not bound to the timeline, but the things you are bound to are the applications received, dates, and the closing time. And the closing time needs to be fairly strict, in that you need to close, and people need to know that the applications need to be received in our office by, you know, three P M. I'm making this up. Three P M, Friday.
How many weeks do you have? If you're, if you're kicking it off September thirteenth, that's when the application is available, right?
Kicking it off the thirteenth of September.
That's down to three weeks in September, now we're in two days.
You have one, two, three, four, five. You could close the sixteenth of, you could close the sixteenth of October.
So write that on there, somebody.
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking is, I mean, you know, this was, they were looking to have this grant in January, and we're not looking for January.
Right, but we'll move it all forward, though.
That's why, that's why I'm saying, we need to really be making-
Oh, you're now looking at a July start? Okay.
But Judy is here until June.
That's not unusual, is it?
But we're flexible, we had to do it, right?
Right, we're flexible, right, but-
It's possible that your candidate might be available to come in and transition.
A little bit earlier.
Yeah. Is the sixteenth an okay closing date?
Yeah, because it's five weeks, right? Is that about what you think is right?
He does miss five weeks.
Well, I can tell you that what we would then do is tell the search committee that on Friday night, you're going to get sent to you in an electronic format, the application packages of all the candidates. Or, we could say, sometime, you know, Saturday morning or Monday morning, we will have the applications delivered to some central location, where you can come and pick them up. And you know, then what we try to do is, we try to get the search committee going very quickly. You can give the search committee the applications on Friday night, and by Tuesday, the twentieth, they could be ready to start selecting the candidates to interview, and they can begin their interviews as early as the twenty-fourth of October. Hopefully, the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, twenty-fourth is a Saturday.
Well, search committees often use Saturdays, because you can interview more people on a Saturday than you can on a weekday. You know, for example, if you're going to start your interviews at, let's say, six-thirty, you could do somebody at six-thirty, and then somebody at eight. You could do that without killing yourself. But you couldn't do six-thirty, eight, and nine-thirty. Wouldn't be fair. But on a Saturday, depending upon people's availability, you could do nine, ten-thirty, break for lunch, and then one and three, and get four interviews.
Plus, the people need to travel two or three hours, it's easier on a Saturday.
Well, you could just get more, if, let's say you had ten people that you wanted to interview. You know, it's hard to get all of those cats herded into a timeframe that works. On the other hand, if people can't do it on Saturday, she's doing it on weekends.
If the application's closed on the sixteenth, and you do whatever, whether the people get it electronically, or people pick them up, how, isn't that rather ambitious to try to do that in a few days? To go through those, and choose semifinalists, who do you want to interview?
I'll tell you how we handle that. There are several strategies that we can use. The first is that we can review the applications, and pull out the people that we feel are most appropriate to interview, and give those interviews to the search committee. Some school committees ask us to do that delegation. As an alternative, some search committees like to see all the applications, and ask us to provide a tiering memo. So in other words, let's say you had twenty applications. You get electronically twenty applications, and then you get a separate, and we would send them out usually three at a time, because that's really all that the servers can hold. And then we'd send out, you know, if you want, here's a memo that indicates where we recommend these candidates would stand on a, on a tiering basis, of who you should see and who you shouldn't.
Like that idea.
And that way, you can see everything. You can make your own decisions, and then see how they jive with ours. Or you can save some time, you know, there, if you get twenty candidates, there likely to be three or four that you absolutely will not want to bother looking at.
I'm sure of it.
They may be among our congenital candidates. There are people who apply for everything. There may be people who are just not appropriate. So we try to give you what we think would be most likely. You usually find that the search committees like to get everything, but they like to give advice about what they should do. And it's all confidential.
So, as far as the timeline goes, I kind of assumed that we had a little more wiggle room.
That's what I was thinking, too.
You know, well, because now that we at least know for sure that-
You absolutely have, you absolutely have plenty of wiggle room.
So I don't want to rush the process, you know, six months ago, I felt we needed to rush it more, but I thought that was kind of the whole point, was to be able to slow down the process a bit.
Then, then you can give them more time, and convene, convene, take a couple of weeks, and we'll see you the week of November eighth.
Yeah, to be clear, I also don't want to live the process for six months. You know, I'd like to find the sweet spot somewhere, and-
Well, if you waited until-
Is it still possible, if they waited, just to jump in, would it still be possible to have a possible superintendent selected before Christmas?
Right, let's say you wait until the eighth, and the search committee meets the week of the eighth, and they give their recommendations to the school committee at the end of the week. All right. And the school committee decides to schedule the finalist interviews first week in December, which is two weeks later. Gives you time to think about it, maybe set up some site visits. The school committee could make its considered, could get its interviews together, and do its interviews, as they say, the week of the seventh of December, and be ready to identify a candidate the week of the fourteenth. You could do that.
By Christmas.
But as you say, there's no rush, so you may find when the search committee comes together, that key members of the search committee, this actually happened to us in another community, they get appointed, and somebody says, oh, by the way, I'm gone for two weeks at the end of October.
Yeah, I'd like to have a little flexibility in the event that, you know, something comes along, but not, not necessarily something like that, but more like, we need a little more time to process, or, or, you know, or meet, or we have to slow this bit down.
I think we leave the, I agree the time, but I think if you don't nail some of those dates down, then it's going to be-
No, I agree, I agree. We need to have something to shoot for.
You can put some of those dates into your brochure, to show to the candidates, but everybody understands that after the deadline, there are, there are factors of weather, factors of health, factors of-
Who knows what?
Extenuating circumstances, and you don't know who the search committee is, so-
So it's a tentative schedule?
It's a tentative schedule, except the closing time's the closing time.
Right. Which has to be.
All right, so do we have enough time with the dates that we have now? Do you feel comfortable? Do you all feel comfortable with the, with the dates, the nine-fourteen date, the ten-sixteen date? Each day's a different-
Well, the main concern that I have, or the only probably, is that the brochure needs to be revised.
Can I make a suggestion? We were going to talk about this under the business item of your revised meeting calendar. We have discovered- We have discovered that you need to meet jointly with the select board with regard to appointing the fifth school committee member. Select board has put out August 31st as a potential date. You could go into session down at the Council of Aging. I can talk to the town administrator about finding a new spot for which you're on too. Then you could work on any revisions you want to make to the brochure at that point. So that would give you a couple of weeks to think about it, get it to Glenn so that he could...
Once you're done with making the changes to this brochure, if you have artwork that you want to change, photos that you want to change like that, once we have your changes, we can have that together in two or three days. And we can have it up on the website instantly once you've approved it, since it's not a matter of going to the printer and, uh... And not a matter of, uh... Doing a big fold and insert.
So if that were amenable to the committee, it would just...
The big delay comes in waiting for the printer, so if we're not waiting for the printer, but just the graphic designer, the graphic designers in our office works for us.
So what I was gonna suggest is the 31st being potentially a joint meeting day for us with the select board to appoint our new member. We're gonna be there. We can still continue there, but it may not be possible. So we may need to adjourn and just move somewhere else to continue the conversation. Probably, it shouldn't take too long anyway.
Right, I would say you could probably use somewhere up in the selectman's office or something.
But it doesn't have to be public, right?
Yeah, but you would just say, "We're gonna..."
Move it up there.
"We're going to recess and reconvene at place X." Yeah. I'll talk to Chris tomorrow.
As long as it's accessible to the public and...
Right.
Just make sure that you put that in the call of the meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Cover your bases.
So let's do it that way. I would feel more comfortable if we have an opportunity to talk about what's in the brochure. It's an important component of the announcement. That said, there are some dates here. Are we more or less at least good with these?
Can I do some of those dates?
Hmm? Yeah.
We've gotta come up with some other ones.
Yep.
Right, that's what we were saying is...
So we said the deadline for submitting applications in our case would be October 16th. Are we good with that?
I'm sorry, what?
Deadline to submit the applications would be October 16th?
Yes, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay. The semifinalists would be selected. I think both of you said that you would like to have a little more time than just a few days to be able to... So how, how much time do we, do we need, or you need, you think? If you receive...
Now, if we're getting, let's just say we get them electronically that night, just hypothetically. We'd have to need time to meet with the committee, so we need to have...
You're meeting with the committee and then open up applications?
Right.
To start to select your, who you want to interview, right?
Mm-hmm.
Who your semifinalists are.
So how long do you think we need to meet with them and come up with the semifinalists?
Well, I think it's gonna be... Off the top of my head, I know I'm gonna need a few days to, to actually sit down and go through all of the applications and wrap my head around it myself.
That's the second meeting of the search committee. First meeting of the search committee is during orientation.
Right.
The second meeting, um, you can set at the search committee.
The, so the first official meeting is the 28th.
That's correct.
During orientation.
And then you can say, "Search closes on, on October 16th." Then you can say, "Candidates selected for interview, uh..." You could say, "The week of October 25th." Give yourself...
Right, so is the 26th a good date for...
26th is a Monday, yeah.
You guys are on that subcommittee, so I don't want to really...
Yeah, make decisions.
Yeah, make decisions for you guys.
In order for us to look at them and that and also meet. I think that's fair.
I think it's pretty fair.
It's good. Okay.
But you don't know if the search committee can meet that night.
Right, but tentatively.
You gotta let them know that. Hopefully, that's your ballpark, right?
Do you want me to hold that night?
Um, which night is it, the 26th?
26th, Monday, October 26th.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's where you select your semifinalists.
And then what, just semifinalists?
Which I assume, Glenn, they would go into sort of an executive session to do this, correct?
Yes, that's, that's, that's under strict executive session. We will have conferred with the candidates. And if one candidate says, "I demand executive session," that's legally justifiable.
But do you want them getting tired from...
To convene an executive session for everybody.
Okay.
And then they can decide when they're gonna be scheduling the interviews.
So when would you start if you, if you select the semifinalists on the 26th? When would you start interviewing?
The week of the 8th.
Is that good for...
Veterans Day is the middle of that week, don't forget.
Uh, it is.
Yeah, it's the 11th.
It's a holiday. They could meet on Veterans Day if they wanted to, but maybe they won't and you... I mean, let's say they came up with, uh... Seven to 10 people. You do two a night. And, uh... Maybe finally, you know, last night deliberate and select your candidates. Get the recommendation to the school committee. In time for the school committee to digest that, work on questions, and schedule their interviews for early, mid-December.
Yeah, I mean, if we're interviewing 10 candidates, that's gonna take place over the course of a couple of weeks.
You might be interviewing eight candidates.
Or even eight, I mean. I work late two nights a week.
I know.
I, I just, I don't know how it, if we're doing it on weeknights...
Well, he's just giving suggestions.
No, I know. I'm, I'm, what I was gonna throw out was I would be...
You could do it over two weeks if you wanted to.
Yeah.
If it works for the committee, it's, you have plenty of time.
That's, that's important.
I guarantee the candidates will be there.
Yeah.
These are calls that always get returned. People always seem to make themselves available.
So we're saying the first interviews to begin potentially be the week of the 8th.
Yep.
So I'm just throwing these dates again. You will be on the committee, so if you don't think it works, we can change. On the, on the 26th, we have the semifinalists, um, of October, sorry. You start on the 9th of November. Your interviews, if, say it's 8 to 10, let's say it takes two weeks. So you are done by the 20th. So you have your finalists selected by the 20th of November. Um, the following week is Thanksgiving week. We're not gonna have much. So the week after that, week of the, of, of November 30th, the first week of December, if we do the school visits. And then the third week of December, it may be late, but I'm just throwing it out there based on this thing here. If we did the finalist interviews and finalize it by the 18th of November, which, uh, December, which is the last day of that week. Probably by the 17th of December, Friday.
If you had three finalists, for example, you could interview them over two nights.
So December 17th, is it a good date? I mean, we're getting pretty close to the holidays. Is it gonna impede anything?
I don't know when your district is gonna be having holiday performances, stuff like that. It's as good a day as any, but I don't, I don't know that you need to set the date right now.
Okay.
You might, you might do it in your brochure.
That feels a little, a little more difficult.
With holidays.
Yeah, with the holiday and... And, and did we have a goal to have somebody, to have this finalized by Christmas? What is, does it, is that necessary?
If you needed to, and if you were delayed, you just put it off until January.
I think it'd be good if you could, but you might wanna monitor...
I just don't want to feel rushed to have some, some artificial date.
Well, you may want to monitor the environment because you don't know where other districts will be in looking for their superintendents. You could be competing with Southbridge. You could be competing with Athol Royalston.
And if we wait too long, then those people will choose jealous.
Well, the best people might get picked off, so...
And when does that happen normally, usually?
Well, as I say, you can, you can play that by year and move as fast as you need to be as you see how fast other districts are moving.
Well, you have the pulse more than people.
Well, Narragansett Regional is moving pretty quickly.
That's up at Templeton.
That's correct. I think Palmer will be done, uh... Early in October anyway, so that'll be done, like, not later in September. I don't know what Athol Royalston's gonna do. And you never know what may open up in the meantime. You may have the field all to yourself for a while.
So you'll kind of keep us...
Well, you'll be able to monitor everything else, too.
So I guess that's part of the reason, Dean, there is really, there is really no rush in the large sense, but the rush is that we don't really want to lose a good chunk of the pool because folks will make their decision and commit to elsewhere more than likely. So we wanna...
So can we keep that kind of in our back pocket and, you know, plan accordingly, right? And, um, knowing that we need to be expeditions.
Yeah. I wonder if the dates that folks see on these brochures make any difference? You know, they're gonna make a decision by the stage?
The date they pay attention to is the, is the closing date of the application.
Okay, all right.
And the date that they're expected to...
Start.
To start. After sitting superintendents, that's more important. For someone else that may be able to lead the district sooner, it might be, might be less.
That said, if there are some other positions that they apply to that have their interviews and everything else completed before we get to them, and they make a decision, "Hey, you know, I'm just gonna bite the bullet and I'm taking that position because I don't want to wait for Gramby interviews in late January."
That's a real problem at Falmouth and Barnstable. In Palmer, they'd be having the three districts in and around the same place. Southeastern Massachusetts at the foot of the Cape. We had a situation in eastern Massachusetts last year. If you know, you're, you're great at Boston Cities, where Waltham, North Andover, Winchester, and Somerville were all working at the start of the year at the very same time. To the point where North Andover and Waltham had their eye on each other. To the point where Waltham moved their meeting up and North Andover moved their meeting up two hours before Waltham. Just to get sort of the first draft pick.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at this...
That hasn't happened in a long time, but it did then.
This timeline right now seems pretty... It seems pretty good to me.
Okay, the one that we just talked about?
Yeah, I mean, the way we have it set up right now, the only variable is do you wanna, you know, solidify it before Christmas or after Christmas?
And you can, you can...
And it sounds like what you're saying, Emery, is you want a date, you want a date in there in the brochure.
Put a day in there, and if you have to move it back, you just move it back. You're not violating anybody's rights by moving the date back. You are if you extend the closing date for only certain people.
Right, that's it.
I, and to answer your question, Dean, yes, I would prefer to have dates. We can actually put something that says tentative for some of them, potentially. But, you know, they can move. Other than that, it would be good to finalize it before the end of the year, not to lose...
The dates are always given focus, you know.
Yeah. And if you guys are good with those dates that we just talked about, let's start with that if we have a need to move back and forth. Would anyone know the number of semifinalists that we're gonna end up having? Maybe you're not even gonna need two weeks, maybe.
Right, it might, it might change. Okay, so can we go over the dates? Because I, I may have missed them at the end, so... Another 16th for the deadline, October. October 26th was the semifinalists being selected.
26th, yeah.
Uh, the week of November 8th, the 9th. Yep, for the deadline. The 26th for the semifinalists being chosen. Uh, the week of November 9th, I guess, for interviews. November 20th or thereabouts for the finalists being selected. Anybody looking so far? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, and the week of November 30th for candidate site visits? That's as far as I got.
Week of November, what?
30th.
30th.
Yes.
That's as far as I got, so...
The last pending date is that December date for the finalist interviews?
And that, we're looking at December 7th.
Well, I said that, but it could be the week before, too. I mean, the only thing that, as Jim mentioned, in the middle of that week, we have Veterans Day, so...
In November.
I'm comfortable with the December.
What are you talking about? Yeah, then, then we're good, yeah. Yep.
For finalist interviews. I mean, for voting, rather. Is that what we're talking about?
For what?
For voting to appoint.
Yeah, 17th of...
That's what we're shooting for, for the...
Yep.
And then I start the, what, July 1st, right?
That's a big gap.
Well, not if somebody's coming in another district. You know what I mean? Like, people that are already superintendents are working in other...
Nah, you get, you get lined up with a contract, and they can spend a couple of days a month coming in and...
Exactly.
Judy, what do you think? Based on your experience, are these good?
I would say, yeah, that either selecting just before Christmas or early on in January, usually what I call the dance of the superintendents happens in January, February. In that timeline, by the time the end of February comes, that's also down. And in terms of the timing of a July 1st update, even if you're looking at someone who is, say, a sped director because in this neighborhood, there's not a lot of assistant superintendent positions that somebody would elevate to the superintendent. It would probably come from the sped director world or a principal who aspires to be a superintendent. They've got to give notice anyway. Most of them have 60 to 90 days in their contracts as it is. Most of them, if, you know, are probably not gonna pull up stakes in March. They're gonna want to finish out the year and then, and then come your way. And certainly, um, any transition that wants to be done, I would be more than happy to do. I'll give them carte blanche to the district.
Good, thank you. So we're, we're good with these dates for now?
I think so.
Okay. So going back to the 31st, since we're gonna be meeting, finalize the appointment. Can we spare a little time to go over the brochure so we can finalize the rest of the brochure and talk about all that?
I'll do that.
Okay. So we'll do that on, um, August 31st. So by the time we get to our regular meeting in September, before that, we're gonna have all the information available to you. Before that, we're gonna have the information for you.
I'll, um, call Chris Martin tomorrow to find out if this is...
So we'll hear from you about the brochure text on or about the 31st of?
Right, that's what I...
After the, shortly after the, yeah, 31st.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Now, the search committee members from the school committee will be Marie...
Marie and Dan.
Okay.
So I'm assuming, Glenn, on that first orientation session, that the first item would be to organize and select a chair of the search committee and then someone to act as secretary to take the minutes?
I'm sorry, say that.
Um, the first agenda that gets put out for the search committee should, the first item should be sort of an organization, the selected chair for the search committee and...
Well, y- yes, um... Well, y- yes, um, they can, I don't know what your policy is on committee appointments. Uh, the search committee can either elect a chair or, or whoever appoints, the search committee can appoint the chair.
I think the search committee should appoint.
Well, whatever you decide.
So I just would make sure that you get an agenda set up so that there's an organization item before you get into any deliberation.
How do the prospective members of that committee feel about the search of the?
I think it would be easier to make that decision once we see the.
The madeups of the committee.
Yeah. I think that's gonna be important to know who's gonna be on it first.
So we're on the same page that we should wait until you, me to, good. Wow, we just go on the same page on these things, that's good.
I am impressed.
Did you want us to have dates for these focus groups, is that before now?
Ah, yes, could we, could we, uh, if you could pick a couple of dates, you know, that we can guarantee.
We talked last time about them, they'd be, when we're gonna do them, after-school evening? Like for staff after meetings or something, what did we?
We often do, any or all of the following. Sometimes we do focus groups in the morning for the people who drop their kids off and want to participate. Then during the day, we might talk to the central office, uh, local officials, uh, faculty. One of the things that's been successful is we will often maybe go into a school like this and say, we're gonna be in the library back here running a, running focus group between eleven and one o'clock in the afternoon. Anybody who wants to come in, come in and talk to us. And then, we always do something after school for the teachers immediately after school, but they rarely come. Unless there's a crisis, or they're upset, or a collective bargain, they agree with the needs to be negotiated, uh, they're not there. They just, they will come during the school day, but they tend not to, whatever. And then we can do before dinner and after dinner focus groups in the evening. Now, if you wanted to do this over two days, that's fine. If you wanted to do an intensive day, get as much in as you could. But I'd suggest that even if you did it on one day, you would want to have a second, maybe evening opportunity or some. If there's some way to tie the focus group in with something else that's happening.
Ooh, what about a parents' night or something?
Oh, there are parents' nights.
There's three of them.
Three of them. East Meadows is the tenth, West Streets is the sixteenth, and then Junior Senior High is the seventeenth.
I'm actually, you know, just to be fair, I'm, we've seen that our teachers participate in a lot of good meetings, in large numbers. This is something important for them as well, so I do expect that they would be here to participate in these meetings.
After school?
Yeah, I'm sure, actually, they come to our meetings whenever there is an issue that, and this is an issue for them. This is actually an important thing for them, so I'm anticipating that we would have a good participation.
I think we're hoping.
We're hoping, we're always hoping, but, you know.
When would you do those, Glenn, in terms of this timeline? When would you do those?
Well, as I say, there are two times to talk to teachers. One of them is if you can schedule a midday rolling focus.
So during the lunch break, yeah.
So they come in and out, and then the other one would be immediately after the closes of school.
But when, in terms of this timeframe?
Oh, they could be done anytime, but I'd like to have them done.
From your perspective, when we vest?
I'd like to have them done before the, uh, what am I doing, on the week of the twentieth of September, twenty-first of September?
So, to me, the parents' night seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah, it looks like there's an opportunity to.
If you want them done by that date, the parent, all three parents' nights are the tenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. So that would give folks an opportunity for evening hours, right? That could.
Or you could potentially, because I'm guessing there would be enough parents who might have siblings in both schools, you could potentially do it the sixteenth and the seventeenth, so you're not dragging it out for forever, and just say all elementary parents could do the sixteenth.
The sixteenth and seventeenth are actually taken.
Okay.
I think a parents' night, those are, those are awful busy for parents. They're going to the classroom, be the teacher, I can't, why would they now try to fit in and talk to somebody else? I think that's too much.
I could do after-school and evening meetings on the sixteenth.
And what's?
What time does school end?
Uh, it ends here at two o'clock, and at the elementary school's at two-thirty.
Uh, what, what parents' night is the sixteenth?
West Street.
Oh, that's West Street.
Is a parents' night on the sixteenth, where?
West Street.
The elementary.
Yeah, the elementary school.
And that's for the parents to meet with the teachers?
Yeah. So it might be hard to get them to sit at a focus group.
Yeah. If we do it the week after, I guess the risk.
Again, the week of the twentieth will be difficult for faculty and here because of Niask.
Okay, then, then.
The week before?
Or the week after.
The week of the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the week after might be better because Niask has come and gone.
Yep.
I wouldn't do it with.
You know what, you have the search committee on the twenty-eighth.
Right.
We could do focus groups during the day. And then we could do focus groups again, uh, after school. Well, we could, we could do focus groups right up until seven o'clock. And invite parents to come in from, uh.
Five to six.
We could do a rolling parent focus group from five-thirty to seven.
Okay.
At the school.
All focus groups on one day, is that the intent?
Including the staffs during the day.
You could try to get everybody in on the twenty-eighth and then do a second day, where we could pick up the rest. I would suggest, you know, maybe if we did the twenty-eighth and the thirtieth.
Okay.
So, uh, on the twenty-eighth, you're saying during the day and in the evening?
Now, that's the twenty-eighth of September, right?
Yes. I like the sound of that, day and Gramby, brand-new day.
And then on the thirtieth, uh, we could do additional groups as needed. And, uh.
Yeah, because you could do a running faculty group here that both East Meadow and the Junior.
We could have more time with the faculty.
Um, the senior high, the, that, the East Meadow and this building could share, and you might on the other day specifically go to West Street, because it would be a little more difficult.
I was just gonna say, we, I think we have to go to West Street, right?
Yeah.
Now, your schools are located on this campus and.
West Street, which is about a mile and a half down the road.
And you have an elementary school over in?
Yes, right next door.
Yeah.
Four, five, and six.
And the, West Street is?
Free K through three.
Free K through three.
And it's down the road?
Yeah, just in the center of town.
Yeah.
So they're all easy to get to?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Very easy.
Maybe we can work out a schedule for this. So we can talk about that, but let's just consider that a, a dead deal.
Okay.
Good.
So, just to back up the letter, um, sending out for the interests in the search committee.
I'll work on that for tomorrow.
And that is similar to the letter that you sent out for?
And the task, or for school committee even, yeah, letter of interest. Stating your background, why you want to be part of the superintendent's search process, so that hopefully you can get something with some meat in it that will help you make a decision.
And so what will be the deadline?
Well, if you want to consider them by the fourteenth of September, what I would do is then say that you would need them by, you would have to have them in the office by the ninth, so I could scan and email them to you. I'm gonna ask people to submit them in paper, only because my inbox becomes crazy. So I don't want to lose something. So I will tell them, no email submissions will be accepted. Must be in hard copy to the central, to the.
Will you indicate that the names of the search committee members will be in that public record? If they are selected.
So that's about three weeks total.
Yeah, that's what I was.
You tell people, how to time when some of these meetings are already set?
Yeah, I can put that in there, that the orientation, they would need to be available for the.
Right.
For the orientation, that they would need to be available for the meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Right.
And interviews starting in November.
Twenty.
That wouldn't put it down there, but.
Twenty.
I know we gotta commit to the whole thing.
But the meeting in October, I would put those two dates up, that they need to be available for those communities.
They need to be able to commit to.
Yep, the full process.
Get the full process commitment.
Cool. Well, looks like we've covered a lot of ground. Any other questions for Glenn?
Can I ask, cause you have, what are people kind of, what kind of salaries are people putting out there these days?
Have you seen the comparative salary schedule? Did I show them?
I don't recall, no.
Uh, you can computer, will you?
Yeah.
Yep.
Can I, can I download something from this?
Oh, no, not this one.
Here, Glenn.
That's something.
I will, just do it right here.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. Yeah, but at least that would give us a range, and that would allow us to finalize the brochure.
Goodness, a man of many flash drives.
Yeah, well, if you've lost as many as I have.
Here we go. Just take a second till we see the driver.
I'll download it to your, uh.
If you have candidates from Chicago and DC, you could.
Yeah. Somehow I doubt that.
So in the meanwhile, is there anything else that you guys can think about?
Not now, no.
Okay, so salary, schedule would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. The search committee will be in Washington, and they have to pay us a list. Now, there's also, I think we may have had this conversation before. This is the extended list of benefits, I don't know. Not sure that the people collect that one, these three downs will take. No, you don't pull it out, you don't, you don't pull it out until you.
Ejected, yeah.
It's appropriate that we eject it, because otherwise.
Safe to remove our hardware anymore, my friend. Thank you very much.
You know what I think, we once paid three million dollars to close off an area of the Cambridge Public Schools this large to install a computer system. It couldn't do what this stick can do for fifty-nine ninety-five.
There's a bargain going.
Amazing.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you know, um, there is one other thing here, in this, in this compilation, there's a special survey that we did for, uh, one of our districts. Where we actually, after the candidates had been through, uh, the interviews, asked the public to respond on what they thought of the candidates. Okay. You may not need that kind of help, but in districts where people are constantly wanting to be engaged in the process, like, I wanted to be on the search committee, and I can't be, and I'm very angry, well, you can have your candidates come before you, before the school committee interviews them, and meet the public, and engage in that kind of interaction, let people respond to you, and it will sometimes swash the.
Thank you once again for coming over, for all the information.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
And organizing us and keeping us on.
Yeah.
Well, this is the easy part. The difficult part is that you can never anticipate the unexpected things that happen during the search. So we'll cross our fingers, and I'm sure it will go well. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn. Safe travels home.
Okay, our next session, section, is on reports and recommendations of our superintendent.
Yep. Uh, first item on the agenda is a budget report, um, and I'll turn that over to Andy.
So I know we're wrapping up the year, and, you know, I apologize for not getting this in your packet sooner, but we, as we're closing the year, things do change. Even up to this time, we got a revised encumbrance list from payroll, so that's reflected here. So you'll get a more comprehensive, detailed, uh, report that's gonna include budget transfers as we've normally done once we are officially closed, so. As I say in narrative, um, we are at zero. We've had to be.
Preliminary final result.
So preliminary final result, yes. So, uh, we have, you know, we'll be coming back, as I said, with the normal reclassifications that we've done, with the understanding about using transportation money, um, school choice, and what have you, and then, uh, that's, we're done with that, and on to sixteen. But we've had to exhaust any and all grant funds that we had available with some allowable creativity, hence the point of being at zero, so.
So, let me ask this.
Yes.
Since you mentioned creativity and all that, is there still possibly that we may not be at zero, or is this basically where we think for sure we're gonna be for two thousand fifteen?
The only potential areas where it would be, would be in the grants, and some of the grants do have multi-year delegations, which will allow us to potentially carry some over.
Okay.
So, uh, we may end up having some of those, and as we are writing the next year grants, the allocation that we receive, we'll be taking them into consideration to see where it is, but most of those grants are prescriptive in nature, in a sense of, you know, Title I killing user, Title I services, Title II for professional development, uh, high-quality staff, so, you know, we will have to use those in accordance with the grant parameters, but, uh, so that would be the only area of creativity left available to us.
Okay.
Andy, Andy, what happened to the line twenty-eight hundred? Did we only spend sixty-seven percent of that money the whole year? What, what?
That was the.
What was budgeted there? What was that all about?
Well, it wasn't a question of over-budgeting, it was a question of. We had a, instead of hiring somebody, we ended up using contracted services. And the contracted services, it was easier for Dr. Jefferson at the time to write it to come out of the two-forty grant. So when you see the details subsequently, you'll see contracted services in the two-forty grant ads.
Did we budget that down this year, then? I don't have funding this year, what was the? I mean, cause that's probably the one of the lowest ones we are, that was even lower than transportation in terms of what the percentage is spent.
Yes, hang on one second. Yes, hang on one second. Yes, they were down to 220, 486 for FY16.
220. Which line is that again?
2800?
2800?
Mm-hmm.
How about the maintenance, wasn't, didn't we put the extra money in that we got a town meeting march into the maintenance account? Forty-one or whatever that number was, and that still came? We're still way over on that?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Did something else happen after that? What other kind of maintenance issues came up that we tried to get some back in there now to narrow that gap? How did it get greater again?
Um, the, the gap was greater than what you see without the extra town meeting stuff. It was a hundred and somewhat thousand in deficit at, um, before that money came in.
All right. So I guess the magnitude of that, of that overage is, is what's concerning. So, you know, since this is a line item that is.
Oh, absolutely. Going forward, it's a, it's an area of concern as far as, which is why in our FY16 budget, we did increase it. But, you know, it's a.
Did we increase it by something similar to this or?
No.
Was this very unusual that we had, as you said, in the absence of some additional funds coming our way, it would have been around, uh, 200%, we doubled that line.
That's correct.
That's why one of my goals for evaluation is a five-year capital plan.
Okay.
And it wasn't much money. What happened in the collaborative and the lower plan and collaborative that was so far over? What happened there? What? Not a lot of money, but, you know, sixty, twenty-three is budgeted, yet we expended 70,000. How, how could that have been?
Without the roster in front of me, I don't have to get back to.
Was it potentially some Stevens going that way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, would have been an unanticipated tuition. And that's, that's just the nature of special education, it's a constant moving target. Found out today we have an unanticipated tuition coming our way.
I can get the details for you on that for the next one.
Just curious, it's not a lot, it's just like, when you look at the cents, I know it's flexible, but you, you'd want to have the money there because you want to spend it. And all of a sudden, you know, if we didn't have those other overages there or underages called, then we'd really be in more trouble.
Right. Uh, without legs that I just try to find a roster, if I, I know I have 16's roster, but I don't know if, uh, I have 15's. But I can get them.
Is there any way possible, and I understand how they fluctuate, but is there any way possible for future meetings to maybe have this, like, in the dry before?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Like I said, this was just done due to the fact that we have, uh, changes in the payroll encumbrance.
That's fine.
But yes, going forward, absolutely.
Okay, only because it's hard to look at it when we come here and have questions.
Totally agree, totally agree.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And it would be great, Andy, if we can have some narrative around the very large fluctuations so that, uh, you know, we can better understand. There could be some lessons learned in there, there could be some things that we can apply going forward. So that would be very helpful if we can have that type of conversation.
Well, see also now that we have the drive and the use of that, it's something that I know Jim, when he was a principal here, we actually had our website, and everybody's got an email and password where we keep, you could go back and check, we have an entire history of, since we've been here, of the budget grants and revolving accounts every month on our website. So now using the drive through the district, we can definitely increase the narrative. We've tried that before and so we can, with, where Dr. Ghoul will come up with, you know, kind of the, what we're hearing, and I would agree, I mean, uh, we should be able to tell both in a narrative, in a numerical fashion, changes for those that are numbers people, can look at the numbers and then the story behind it, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And for 2016?
2016, it's, uh, like I said, we are still finalizing as we normally do over the summer. We still have some high rates going on. Grant information has just been released, not all of them, but most of them are. We are looking at overall about a $15,600 decrease in our entitlement grant allocation. So, uh, we're working now with the, and sped directors and Dr. Ghoul's working on the title grants to see how we are going to reallocate those. But, you know, with potential looking, as I said earlier, some potential flexibility in any year-two rollover from current year grants. And school choice is slightly down. Sticking with the final number for our FY15 last June 30 number. So we're down about 16 grand in that as well.
16?
Yeah.
Okay.
That fluctuates though, the, just through the years and stuff, we'll see some, you know, if you were to look at last year, it was a rollercoaster ride here. The December number went up, the March number went down, and then the planning was, so it went down more, so.
But at this point in time.
Where 16?
If I'm not misreading the story, we actually had some unexpected hits.
Yes.
And we're anticipating some adjustments to see whether or not we're going to be able to make up for that?
Uh, we do not have, I'll tell you right now, within our, even the flexibility allowed us by grants to cover as Dr. out of district placement and, uh, you know, we'll have to look and see potentially the network situation. We might be able to cover some, but I doubt we'll be able to cover all.
Okay.
But, you know, yeah, we are, you know, for all intents and purposes, you could be looking at a starting school with a budget freeze on, on that.
There's already one in place.
Right, so.
Unless it's an emergency of the administration, we're not buying stuff right now until we can get the dust to settle on this.
All right. So as the year goes on.
Most of the things have been ordered.
Yes.
The necessary supplies have been ordered.
And I tell people if there was something absolutely urgent, come talk to me. But at, you know, um, other things like I know in the past, superintendents have done a chalk talk mail out. It's going to be done electronically this year just to save the printing and the postage. Um, encouraging principals to do more electronic communications, get people used to that, um, you know, that groove in terms of just being able to ring in postage and printing, that's something that you can do pretty easily. You've just got to get people used to.
The digital backpack.
Yep, yep, the digital backpack and, and those kinds of things.
Okay. Any other questions for Andy?
Back to Andy.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. Okay, the next item is the superintendent evaluation plan.
Um, I left, uh, on your places as well as had put in the, uh, drive, the, um, plan form that sort of takes the four goals that I had set and, uh, turned them into a plan of action. And this would be the part that we would need to sign off on. At the last meeting, you did approve my, uh, goals for the coming year. So this just sort of says this is how it's going to work.
That's what we talked about.
Yep.
Well done, Judy.
Yep.
Good luck doing it all.
Sleep is over already.
So Judy, just to clarify, since we use the, uh, the term capacity.
Mm-hmm.
Often, but in different ways, depending on where you use it. When we say capacity building sessions, what, what are those and what comes out of that?
Um, basically, it's professional development for, um, the senior leadership team and, um, the teachers in the art of writing curriculum. I mean, I could do the work, but that doesn't help the district carry forward. So to be able to give them the tools to be able to do the work, so that would be my goal is to be more focused on, here's the tool set, now go do and, and check in with them as the process unfolds.
Okay. Thank you. Any action on this one? What are we doing?
Um, you should probably have a motion to approve the plan and then, um, you and I can sign off on two copies, one for you to keep and one for me to give.
Sounds good. So is there a motion to approve the plan?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Dr. Ghoul's educator plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other questions this question?
I do have a question on the, um, actions to engage, say, the select board, finance committees, school building committees. Um, how do you envision that looking?
Um, obviously, uh, for example, getting to select board meetings. I know there's a lot of conversation at select board meetings and that may be difficult because I think our calendars are going to somehow mesh, so, um, you know, but if they were to have something like on the August 31st meeting, if I were to look at what they had posted, you know, it might be something that, you know, I might say, gee, um, you know, I know they've had a lot of conversation about shared services and trying to consolidate some things and, um, you know, the meeting we were all at, there was a whole other conversation that happened after we left, you know, around even sharing the financial software and that kind of thing. So just to be able to, to be available with the select board on nights that they may be meeting that we're not, to be able to do that. I've already spoken with, um, two of the members of the finance committee, um, directly, both Ms. Libera and, uh, Dr. Hartley about getting to finance committee meetings around budget time, having an open, honest, transparent budget conversation with them so that they know where we're at before we get to, you know, public input, public hearings, all of that kind of stuff, so that that all happens ahead of time so that they feel like they fully understand our budget process because right now the feedback I have gotten is that they don't.
Mm-huh.
Um, and so I want to, again, um, I know that this is Andy's philosophy as well, is that the budget, it should be a transparent document, people should understand the all funds concept. It's the public's money, there's no reason why it shouldn't all be out there.
Yeah, I think, I think we would all agree that we have, you know, we have some work to do to, to regain relationships. And I know that we're on the right track, given what we went through this last budget.
Yep.
Meeting with the finance committee and select board, and I, I just want to make sure that we continue that.
Well, and I got some good feedback from, um, one of the members of the finance committee about even the school building project and things in terms of public outreach that they would like to see, you know, in terms of, you know, if you're going to make a claim about, um, say, you know, the systems of the building at, at West Street School being sort of beyond repair, well, they would like to know what's a guesstimate as to what it would cost to bring West Street up to code. Is it cost prohibitive to the point that, yeah, they should put their, their, um, voices behind the plan to do the ad rental? But to make a claim without numbers to back it up for them is problematic. So if that was good feedback for me to hear, um, and certainly to talk to the school building committee around, let's make sure that when we're doing public outreach, we're not just saying that West Street has reached the end of its useful life. Why is that? What would it cost to do that? What systems are down? What's not the code, et cetera, et cetera, um, to be able to back that up? They're looking for that kind of specificity so they can have some comfort with saying that they stand behind the plan. And, and I, I understand that.
It's something that we all have to work on. And by all, it's not just this body, but all of us, so. Thank you. Any other questions? All good? Okay. Uh, next item is.
You need a vote?
Oh, we need to, sorry, thank you. So we had the motion and the second, we had a discussion. All in favor approving the plan as presented?
Aye.
All right.
All ready.
Thank you.
Two signatures and you can keep one, and I'll keep one outside.
Cool, this sounds great. Sounds like you want it now.
You do now.
Well, this is going on, the, Mr. P. Trish, your question about the collaborative tuition. There was one student budgeted, the one that had been sent to, uh, so that additional.
Lower Pine Valley?
Yes. And I have to go through and I'll get the other one because it's more detailed than this, but that's what.
Great.
Okay. How long was this student out?
A good chunk of the year.
A good chunk of the year.
It was also, uh, oxygen, so there were additional services that were included in that.
Dr. Ghoul, is there a place on the binder that this should go?
Um, you can just put it in that first tab at the end.
Yeah.
Just for our records? Yes.
After the self-assessment.
That's what I was thinking.
Cool. Now the next item, the employee handbook that was sent and I believe was now, is now revised.
Yes, I did actually sit down and, on paper, because I'm not good at tech editing on a screen. So I tried, tried to do some tech editing on paper and found, uh, some typos and that kind of thing. And certainly I have looked at this so much, um, that I may have missed some edits. So if you have suggestions for me, I am all ears.
I have, I have one that I caught, the only one that I caught, that maybe I'm just reading it, it came from my head, but, um, it is page seven. Right at the very top, the hours of work. And it says, in addition to these hours, all teachers are required to faculty meetings.
Oops, to attend meetings, yeah, thank you.
That's the only one that I caught.
Okay.
And I'm not going to lie, I was not, I was not reading for editing. I was reading for just, you know.
Yeah, and then I had to revise the table of contents because as I move things around, numbers moved around. So that's the revision to the table of contents.
So, um, one quick correction.
Sure.
On, uh, page two of 50, the, uh, website. The H is missing from the schools.
Must have been in blue if you lost the H.
Yeah.
Oh, yep, got it. See it in the letter, yep, okay. Thank you.
Um, you're welcome. And there is one section here, and this is just, uh, me wondering, under employee absences.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, these are nice, clean instructions, however, and Marie's named by name. What happens if she's not there? Do, are we complicating it by not putting a position and we're naming individual?
Um, right now she is the substitute caller, that is her cell phone number. So, I mean, it is pretty specific to her as a person. Obviously, if something were to change during the school year, we just put out an addendum.
I mean, if she's on vacation or something like that, that's what I was thinking.
She still takes.
She does?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well said then.
She takes them if she can, she passes the word to the principals or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and I have to, because this is revised, I'll just have to scroll down the last three forms. Uh, the last, well, one suggestion, I don't know if everybody will agree, but people's services office, the apostrophe after people's services, I don't think it's needed, it's people's services, it's not.
Okay.
Uh, also, the, the forms that read technology policy.
Mm-hmm.
Same correction for people's services on all three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on technology policy, uh, 10 days instead of 10 business days.
Should be business days, the same thing.
Same thing for the following one, it should all read 10 business days. Uh, and I think that's all I had.
I'll go through and do another tech edit on paper, but I'm just not good on the screen. So, and this turned out to be quite.
It's a lot of work.
Just tracking down policies and making sure they get formed in and, and so on.
Now, you're copying that for every staff member?
Uh, we're going to do this electronically.
Good, nice.
Um, we're going to, I'm going to establish an employee area of our website that people can get forms like the leave request forums and all of that kind of stuff so that people have a place to go to. This is going to live there, we'll direct people there. Uh, I know that some of our, I think that, uh, some of our custodial staff do not have district emails, so I'm going to talk to David about that, but, you know, if they needed hard copies, I would do that. And certainly any staff member who might need a hard copy could either print it out themselves or could ask for hard copy to be printed.
So then they would print the authorized part and then?
We'll probably print the sign-off sheets and give them to them. Um, and then we'll have them, give them into the offices at the schools and then we'll collect them and put them in people's personnel files.
Just one, one last thing. Again, on the forms.
Mm-hmm.
On the technology one.
Yep.
There is a lot of explanation as to what the ramifications of violating this particular policy would be. Then when you go to the sexual harassment policy procedure, that section doesn't have. that section doesn't have anything that refers to any criminal, criminal, um, investigation or something of that nature or a legal case. Is this modeled after other forms that are commonly used? Or should we, on top of saying that there might be some disciplinary action, we should also refer to the case that this is actually a legal issue as well?
Um, yeah. I could certainly add that in criminal.
Now I think I'm-
Okay. No, that's good. Like I say, I've looked at this so many times that you've, you become blind to it.
Cool.
So I'll give it a day or two rest and then I'll go back and do one final tech edit to make sure.
Thank you very much for putting this thing out.
I, oh my gosh, as I was reading through it, I was like, I'm running on abort.
That's why you get it Sunday afternoon because I was sitting here.
I know you were because I drove by here.
Yeah, I was here for about four hours Sunday afternoon. I came out, somebody was out in the parking lot. I said, what are you doing here? I said, no phone calls, no people. It's easy to get work done.
Well, now that you're, we know you're going to be here. We're going to call Sunday afternoon.
No, no, no. I'm going to-
You'll answer.
That's right. Call our ID. Nope, not that one.
Any action needed on this one?
Um, if you will approve it as amended, then I can do the final tech edits and get it ready to go for day one.
So is there a motion to approve the employee handbook as amended?
Oh.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any questions or any additional comments, edits? All good. So all in favor of approving the employee handbook?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Uh, next one is related to athletic fees and ticket prices. There's a proposal.
Um, as you know from the transportation bid that there was an increase in athletic transportation for this coming year. And also we're finding difficulty keeping up with expenses both on the local side and through, um, the athletic revolving count. So we're proposing some increases in athletic fees as well as in the, um, ticket prices to be able to, um, make sure that we can keep up with expenses as they are adding up. It's been a while since any of these prices have been increased. I spoke with both Mr. Cavalo and also with Mr. Tebow, who's the athletic director, who told me that, um, most insurances will provide a reimbursement as a wellness, you know, something, just doing something for wellness and that high school athletes will qualify in most insurance policies. But there's usually a hundred and fifty dollar threshold. So he said oftentimes parents who have students who only play one season, they spend a hundred and thirty-five, but they can't get the hundred and fifty benefit or they have to wait till the second season comes along and then put the two things together. So by increasing it to a hundred and fifty, we don't see that as necessarily being a hardship because, again, most health insurance plans do provide for a wellness benefit. You just have to, he signs off, and he's done this for several students. He's signed off on them having participated in, in the sport so then the parent can get reimbursed. So the hundred and fifty dollars, um, allows him to do that. As you can see from the table, um, there were discounts given. So I, in the proposal, did that same rate of discount for those, um, particular items. And then, um, the ticket prices are four dollars for an adult and two dollars per student or senior. And, um, again, recommending five dollars for an adult and three dollars for a student or a senior. Again, Mr. Tebow said that oftentimes people who come from visiting teams are astonished at how low our ticket prices are. Oftentimes we'll hand the five dollar bill over and say, keep the change anyway. So, you know, we don't see this as an undue hardship on folks attending athletic events either, so.
Which is only basketball.
It's also wrestling.
Wrestling?
Wrestling.
Oh, that's right. You pay that. So you can't vote on this because you have to pay that.
How do, how do the, uh, athletic fees, the proposed athletic fees compare to other schools in our area?
They're low. I didn't do a formal search, but just what I know anecdotally, they're low even at this rate compared to a lot of other districts.
Okay. And-
Okay. And what was budgeted, what's budgeted this year in the athletic and student activity line? Last year we had a hundred forty-nine twenty-seven.
When you ask budgeted, do you mean the revenue that we are budgeting to get in or?
Or what was, well, either way, both of them, what we budgeted and then what else you're anticipating? What is coming from fees then? What's paid out of that? Is that, is that all, is that culture salaries? Is that officials?
It's a combination. So we have-
Yeah, and there's going to be more transportation offloaded onto that because that, while the, uh, regular runs was a significant decrease, the transportation was an increase. So, again, that was part of what we were, with the finance committee was to say that we would offload as much athletic transportation into athletic revolving as we possibly could.
And what, if these fees are voted the way, what do you anticipate? What would be the, what would be the extra income you're going to get from this, that this is worth doing? What's the extra income going to be?
That's a great question to which I don't have the answer right at the moment.
Well, I think, I think the, a pretty important observation is that we're not in line with other districts. And I think we need to be in line, especially considering the budget situation that we're faced with. And the reality of it is that, you know, there's nothing wrong with being in line with other districts.
And these haven't been increased in some time, have they?
Not some time, maybe, um, eight, nine years ago, maybe?
Oh, come on.
That's exactly.
Are you serious?
The user?
So do we have about, what, forty, fifty students playing basketball?
Well, the winter season is our heaviest, you know, that's our largest turnout for student athletes.
So between basketball and wrestling, we're talking-
Maybe about a hundred, you know, between the, um, all, between cheerleaders, wrestling, maybe a hundred and twenty student athletes.
So the fifteen dollars-
So fifteen dollars times a hundred and twenty kids, you know, in that season, it gives you sort of ballpark.
And just a stupid question about the, whether you're paying, whether you're playing middle school or varsity, the fee is the same?
Fee is the same.
And why, why is that?
It's, it's a good question.
I mean, I don't understand that either.
Well, it's the same amount of gas.
No, no. But it's not, you don't pay the same amount of games? The officials aren't paid as much?
Some schools have gone to a tiered system. And we've had this conversation before as a school committee where, you know, for example, hockey, you know, some of those sports where they're both offensive to play, it'd be considered, you know, versus cross-country where, you know, you're basically just paying for a coach.
Right.
You know, there's no officials or no, you know.
So, again, you know, I think this is a first step. I think probably as we look towards FY seventeen, we could certainly consider some, you know, things like a tiered system, et cetera. And then this will probably be the bottom tier and you'd be looking at higher fees for junior varsity and varsity sports.
Will these fees, are these fees getting new soccer uniforms, I hope?
I can't guarantee you that, but it can get you a bus ride to a game. How's that?
I don't want any grief over if people see black soccer uniforms again. I'm going to listen to more grief. So I guess it doesn't. No notices have been out to any parents yet because sign-ups are just about started, right? No money's been collected yet?
Some people have already paid, but obviously we can't put out notices until you vote, so. Of the change of fees.
So what do you do with those folks that have paid?
You can do one of two things. You could either grandfather them in or you could say this is the fee and Mr. Tebow has a list of who has already paid and you would just have to say that, you know, it's been an increase in the fee and this is how much extra we need.
So some folks already paid for winter sports or?
All sports.
Which one is fall sport?
Soccer across country.
Golf.
Yeah, I was just thinking of tickets and-
Yeah. Mr. Tebow came back from a meeting today where many schools are now using almost like a PayPal or through, kind of through the website. Maybe he talked to you about it as well. Where, I'm not saying we're going to do it this year, but down the road we'll get where parents can pay, whether it's credit card or whether it's their checking account number, whatever it might be, through an automated, you know, website that the school handles where the money goes. I think he actually may have said something to you as well, Andy, about it, you know, looking at that kind of.
Yeah, which I think, again, makes, makes some sense.
Yes, to make it as, as convenient and as easy as possible for, you know, for parents already asked to pay. I'll make a motion to accept the new, uh, fee schedule for athletic fees and ticket prices.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments, conversation, discussion, question? Okay. All in favor to approve the updated fee schedule for athletics? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The last item in this section is a revised school committee meeting calendar.
Yeah, based on your, uh, last meeting and discussion about going to a bi-monthly, um, or bi-semi-monthly, whatever it is, every two weeks, calendar, I, um, I just drafted this based on a conversation that we had at the last meeting. And as I said earlier, one of the things that did come to Mr. Reverend's attention and mine as well is that, uh, I guess the select board would like to meet with the school committee jointly regarding the appointment on August 31st. If folks are amenable, and that would be at 6:30. And I've been assured we will be first on the agenda.
Oh, thank goodness. Thank you. Especially if we're going to continue on to a-
Right.
-regular meeting. I think that should be a rule for any committee, joining another committee, don't you? It'd be the first item on the agenda.
So. So this would allow for the first meeting of the month, with the exception of September, which is actually the second Monday anyway. But that first meeting to be at 6:30 and allow the policy subcommittee to meet so that you're meeting on a monthly basis, working on a policy manual.
Yep.
And then, um, the full school committee meeting at 6:30 and then the second meeting being at six o'clock on that third.
The only one that I have a problem with is October 5th, which I've already told everyone about. I won't be able to do that for a subcommittee meeting. So if we, we can reschedule the subcommittee meeting if anyone wants to.
Yeah, we can, we can reschedule that one. Push it to the following schedule day.
If you want to meet at five o'clock on, on the nineteenth, I can do that.
Yeah. Yep.
You can do that for?
Yeah. But, uh, which day is that again?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth. Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, good.
Um, the other thing is fourth, um, April, we only have one meeting.
Mm-hmm. Um, that's because, um, Patriot's Day is the third Monday of the month. And then you're basically going to have two meetings back to back, two weeks in a row, one way or the other.
So Patriot Day weekend is our, uh, spring break, is that?
Spring break as well, but, I mean, it's a, it's a state and municipal holiday, so technically we're doing business activity.
So the eighteenth, nineteenth?
We may have to put more meetings in as we get on the budget anyway.
Right.
Right.
We're just going to have to.
Okay. So that's, that sounds good. All right. So with that one change that we made for, um,
October.
October. Moving the policy committee from the fifth to the nineteenth, right, to five o'clock. Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to approve this revised school committee calendar as amended?
I would like to approve revised school committee meeting calendar as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So that, that's all we had for this section. Do we have anything under new business treaty?
No, we don't. Just a reminder about, you referenced it earlier about September 20th, that's Sunday. I'll try to get times for you as soon as possible. That's when the visiting committee is going to, it's a Sunday when we'll have a lower reception in the cafeteria to greet the committee and, um, you'll be able to talk to some of the members that'll be here.
Okay, for NIESK?
For NIESK, sorry.
Okay, great.
September 20th?
September 20th. It's a Sunday. Probably sometime late afternoon, early evening, maybe before she herself.
Great, thank you. That'll be great. Okay, so I guess that's all we have for this evening.
Um, just under upcoming business, a couple of things. The coordinator of the after-school program that I just learned, um, a couple of days ago, we own, it has tendered her resignation. So I talked to the institutional memory of the committee, uh, next to you, Mr. Reverend, to find out what the, um, what, what was, um, the story behind that. I think that's something that we should probably take a look at on the fourteenth in terms of formalizing that as a, as a school department program, if that's something you wish to continue with. And just kind of take a look at, Jim was very helpful while I was driving from here to West Springfield to play for a wedding rehearsal, filling me in on, on the background history, but it's probably something as a school committee that you should deal with. And then on the fourteenth, um, we have hired a new assistant principal here at Granby Junior Senior High, Allison Jordan Gagnar. And then, um, so I've invited her to come just so you can meet her and I've asked Mary Burks and Pat Lynch to also come to the fourteenth meeting. Again, just so that you can meet them so you have the introduction to the new administrators. So those were upcoming business items that I just wanted to make you aware of. I don't know if anybody else has anything else that-
The staff on place for the start of school?
Um, we're working on that. We've had some last minute shifts within the last few days and so, um, we're, we're going to make those things settle down, but, uh-
Shifts that save money?
Um, in one case, yes. Mrs. Burke, who teaches third grade, tendered her resignation.
I heard about that.
I did not hear about that.
Yeah.
Just before I left on vacation. So, um, one of our paraprofessionals put in a letter of interest who used to be a Title I teacher. So, um, I just interviewed her today and, uh, am going to approve Ms. Barthollet's recommendation to put her into that teaching position. Mr. Cavalo is still looking for a Spanish teacher. But we've got a French teacher in place. The assistant principal is in place. We will probably have some shifts within the paraprofessionals due to just some last minute changes and needs there as well. And then we have a teacher at East Middle School who's going to be out for a little extra leave due to some family circumstances. And was out last year on an FMLA leave. And a paraprofessional who substituted for her last year is going to step in and sub for as long as necessary this year. Uh, and then, um, so we'll be sort of making some moves in that direction as well. So we're getting there. It's always a last minute rush to the finish line.
Right.
Yep. Did boss any feedback to the bus routes with the change in the times and so on?
Um, I mean, that went out of a long time ago and I have not heard any negative thing.
My parents haven't looked at it yet.
Well, yeah, and I met with Joan Crowther and the woman who does the scheduling for Granby. Last week they were just putting the final touches on. I'm just waiting for them to send me the routes with the approximate times of each of the individual stops and then we'll get that out to the public as well.
Good. Great. Okay, I guess that's it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Great. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.